I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with roll call noting that the board is in attendance. Notification about the meeting we have been properly posted. And we'll move along to the first item on the agenda, which is recommendation to approve the June 8th, 2022 special board meeting.
I'd like Washington to approve the special board meeting and the regular board meeting.
A second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. To a special review minutes are approved. Secondly, the June 8th regular board of education meeting, do I have a recommendation to approve those minutes?
I did that with the both one.
With the both?
Yeah, I put them all together.
Put them all together, okay. I see, thank you. And then the June 28th special board meeting, do I have a recommendation to approve those?
So who?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry it. Thank you. Next up is the resolution to approve the bell list.
I'd like Washington to approve the bell list.
I just have one question. If Cartwell's Dining for catering is at their school? Okay.
Yes, that's the company that we work with for our full school hot lunch program.
Okay.
It's charcoal.
Okay, perfect. Yes, charcoal.
I have one question as well. They had been asking before, but there's a charge for yoga classes.
It's lovely, you all can come. We have a $14,000 wellness grant from our health insurance company. And we offer classes, we offer free fruits and veggies, there's incentives that staff members can participate in and earn a park pass. And yoga is one of those where it's every Tuesday after school, any staff member available can attend yoga for free. The healthier our status, the better they are as teachers, staff members, they stay healthy. We don't have to pay for substitutes and our health insurance premiums stay lower. So we appreciate the $14,000 grant and put it to use. No taxpayer dollars are funded for staff members.
And then another one, and I can't seem to find it back, but it was roughly maybe $1,400 for US Postal Service pickup. We would pay the US Postal Office to run a route here to pick up our outcome.
We do contract for our outgoing postage. I don't know if that particular charge is for that service or it also might be when we send a postcard or for instance, our on point bulletin that's going out to every household. It could be for something like that. I just, if Jeff Gross were here, he could look it up and tell me exactly.
I didn't see it in the prior one, so it just stuck out.
I don't think it's 1401.
Yeah, okay.
It's probably quarter of the year, the full year for all I know.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor to approve the bell list?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The bell list is approved. Who was the second on that? I have Amy.
Oh, wait a second.
Next up is the superintendent's report.
And tonight we have Ryan Mangan, who is our Director of Activities and Athletics. You may recall back in January, he gave a presentation to the board mainly about the fall activities and athletics. He's here tonight to touch on the winter and spring results, but also an overview of the full year. Our successes and areas for improvement goals. And as Ryan's passing out a a hard copy, I'll also let you know, in case you didn't check your email, at 2:42 exactly, looking at the time helps. In your email, you'll see this report was emailed to you, but there's three or four links. So at your leisure, feel free to look through those links. There's a lot of good data that Ryan has provided.
Thank you. Yeah, so basically the this is a summary, I give you a summary page, you got that this afternoon. The links have a lot of data on them, you may or may not have looked through them later tonight, tomorrow, next week, if you have questions about the data on there, please do a call. Kind of, I mean, I'm not going through all of it, it's a lot of numbers. Might be something you're really interested in, maybe not. So I just, this is an annual report that I sort of give to kind of give you an update on things. It's very general because we have a lot of activities and a lot of clubs and a lot of sports. So I don't do a lot of highlighting on specifics because I don't want to highlight too much of any one. So the report has some detail in it. Basically, the first part of it talks about our clubs and activities participation. And linked to there is a spreadsheet that's got the last 10 years of data in terms of clubs and participation. So with our clubs and activities, non-athletic, we have about, we had 21, 2,510 kids involved in clubs and activities. Obviously, our enrollment is around 2,000, that's counting kids, you know, two, three times the thing of what they're involved with. So when I talk to our incoming freshmen at the grade schools in the spring, I go talk to all the grade schools and talk to them about getting involved in activities. I tell them virtually everybody's involved in something and most people involved in multiple things. And I think that's more than true, almost everybody, there's something that everybody's involved in. So the 2,500 is up a little bit from last year. You know, obviously, I think it took a dip from the two years with COVID, it's up from there. Over the last 10 years, we're down some because our enrollment numbers, right? So at one point, we're a school in the 2,400 range, now around 2,000. So participation numbers are still strong, a lot of kids involved in things. But that chart shows all that information. So that's the first link, right? I highlighted a couple of the things with our musical Broadway company this year, what was unique, we had two musicals in one year. Typically Broadway company does one in the fall. Our school play usually happens in the spring. Maryland Marcano, our school play director decided to do a musical as well. So we had Les Mis in the spring after Catch Me If You Can in the fall, which are both. Normally, our musicals and plays get quite a few awards in the Jerry Awards, which is a statewide award, they did well again. I highlighted some DECA information, our DECA group is active as always. You see the DECA groups involved and stuff, Hawk Fest annually, they raise a lot of money. I highlighted that a little bit in there. We got an acknowledgement statewide from State DECA, and I put a link in there as well, acknowledging the $250,000 that they raised over the last, I don't even know how many years by DECA and just being a model DECA program in the state. So that acknowledged, that way from there as well. The bottom, the last thing I had on activities in terms of a specific one was Student Senate. Student Senate is our student government that's involved in the planning for homecoming, involved in the planning for prom, blood drives. A large group of kids involved in a lot of different things, whether it be leadership decisions or creating events. Homecoming last year was, you know, a really good homecoming, it was kind of the first real homecoming in some time. We had a pep rally outdoors with both campuses, which hadn't been done in a very long time. Much, I can't tell you when, at least the decades since they've done that. And we had like 85 degrees in October, which is crazy. So we haven't planned that yet this year because we kind of gotta figure, come back to school and figure out what we're doing. So Student Senate was active in that, homecoming dance and the prom dances were both. Numbers were quite large compared to even the last five, six years. I think it's an opportunity to have the dances that we didn't get to have in previous years. So Student Senate was very busy. The next section talks about community service, I have this in there every year. There's a link on there, and one of the reasons I'm giving you a highlight this year and not a packet is because that started to get too long. We have 19 pages of community service portfolios and summaries of all the clubs and activities, community service that our kids do. So most, if not every one of our clubs, activities or sports does a community service project from doing a free camp to raising money, to collecting food, to correcting clothes for veterans, to you name it, there's a lot of different opportunities. So on that link are 19 pages worth of pictures and highlights of things that our kids are involved in. And credit to the people long before us who started that, but our activities department for the better part of the last two decades has made this a strong you know, emphasis is giving back and being involved in the community. And I think that, you know, having all these pages of representation of things that happen are great things for our kids to understand as not just the help through your club or being part of a team, but being part of the community. So again, I used to print this off and I'm like, I'll let you guys look through it all. And again, ask me questions and believe me, I can't answer a question about every one of them. Like there's things that our clubs and activities are doing, I'm like, we're approving them, they're moving on, but they're happening multiple times a week all year round, even in the summer. The next portion, I have the athletics portion in terms of participation numbers in athletics as well. Same thing as the clubs and activities, you know, we get 1,800, 1,800 kids involved. Again, counting them twice, so a lot of, a lot of boys and girls involved in all of our club sports, I mean, our varsity sports. So they haven't flowed different years, you have different numbers, different classes have more interest. You know, and so we watch these numbers, can't always control them, but you know, at the end of the year, coaches, I talk, hey, you know, figure numbers mean, what are we gonna do with more kids on a team? What are we gonna do with more transportation? Can we get smaller numbers mean, hey, why we got less going on? What can we do to improve that, you know, what's going on? And so those numbers, while you can't always answer those questions, there's something that we monitor on an annual basis to say, wow, we really had a spike in this sport this year. You know, our, we have sports seasons and sometimes by gender and by season, you'll see a spike in one sport, a drop in another, and two years later, it'll go the opposite direction. So and sometimes that's conversations with our youth groups to say, okay, how can we get more involved with them to help those numbers? So I list after that, conference champions and the state champions and the state qualifiers. We got another strong year in terms of, you know, accomplishments. And the last page also lists our individual state champions and those are just the champions. I mean, there's a lot of kids that took second or third. And again, not trying to sell anybody short, but we listing all of them is problematic and I don't want to miss out on anybody. But a lot of, a lot of kids doing a lot of great things, working hard. At the end of it, I also have a link that lists our scholar athlete recipients in terms of the number of kids who letter and have a 3.5 grade point average. And as the national research shows, kids involved in clubs and sports do better than those not involved in our student athletes in general, perform our non-student athletes as well. So good stuff. I do want to mention at the bottom, the state champions there, I listed just those, our boy soccer coach received an award this year, which is kind of a neat award. If you hadn't heard about it, he got from the University of Wisconsin, the Bell Cow Award. They had heard about this soccer program that he started up a couple of years ago called Let's Kids Fly. Talks about inclusion, free play and creativity and it's blown up. There's tons of kids playing that this summer and they heard about it statewide and they basically gave him a sports leadership award that they called after the Bell Cow Award as somebody, you know, they basically gave him a big, very, Bell Cow is that one that one that the others follow. And it was really cool, we had a presentation with our staff in January to present it because it's gone to, you know, a handful of people across the state who accomplished great things and it's not even, he's an Arrowhead staff member and a coach, but it was related to his youth sports stuff that he does. So I thought that was important to mention. At the very end, I list just some areas of improvement and concern. This is things I've looked at, things that change over the course of time, things that are constant. As we decrease enrollment, you know, our staff decreases. One of the biggest challenges I have daily, annually basis is just keeping, make sure we have enough advisors to, you know, serve the children in terms of having the programs that we want, whether it be coaches or advisors. We have kids that offer, ask for new opportunities, we look into those opportunities. But even old opportunities, sometimes we can't fill and we're posting, we still have a post right now that are filled, so that's always a challenge. Sportsmanship, not specific to us, specific to everyone, kids and adults alike. We, as a conference, are having sportsmanship some of this October as a group to gather together some of our student leaders to talk about sportsmanship. I've done this in other conferences, we felt like the need to do it because oftentimes, the best way to get kids to understand sportsmanship is to put them in a room together and realizing that they're all different kids. And that maybe you wouldn't yell that at somebody that would get yelled and have a conversation like that. I think that's becoming a bigger challenge today with all the social media and you see it every day with something you would post that you would never say to somebody in front of their face. And we run into that in the sports capacity, whether it be in the stands or online, it becomes a big issue. And so we're trying to be proactive with that. For students and adults alike, because we have similar challenges with our, with our adults. A O D A, alcohol, the drug, our constant, you know, education piece, communication. We'll do a freshman information tonight in August to talk about parents, about some of the things, the challenges that we have with student athletes, with students. But specifically student athletes and kids in clubs, because then we can actually have a connection to them. But you know, just educating them about, you know, vaping, throwing alcohol. So that's constantly something that we're trying to communicate. That's with my participation, but also being realistic about what we can offer. Some of the challenges I talked about in terms of advisors, we do have a limited capacity. You may hear from constituents and neighbors who say, hey, I've talked, we really should have X club or Y club. And there's times we say no, and there might be interest, not always significant interest, but some interest. And we may say clubs, no to clubs that can't be done on campus and are hard to facilitate, budgetarily challenging and have travel transitions. We've said no to clubs such as fishing and sailing that by no not devaluing the value of them, but in terms of doing those and tying them to a school are difficult. Like you have to, we follow rules in terms of background checks, in terms of transportation approvals, in terms of budgetary. And when you start taking things off the campus and far away logistics, I often tell people, hey, get your kid involved, get them involved. There's a lot of ways to get them involved, but just tying them to our school doesn't always make them better. And so we do have a capacity when it's on that. So we have those conversations, sometimes they go well, sometimes they don't. But it's a challenge because it's something that you might hear from, to say, yeah, they won't add all the clients, right? And there's sometimes we can and there's sometimes we just can't. Last one, or last two lives, live shootings becoming more popular, we're trying to figure out the best way to do that. Whether we charge for it, whether we get sponsorship for it. One thing I'm gonna be pushing to get, you know, they used to have a knee class that could help with that, we don't currently have that. That would be helpful down the road to be able to facilitate that. It's something that I think could be a win-win for both areas with, you know, live shootings becoming more popular. We've got cameras in a lot of facilities, it's just the capacity to do it at this point. And then the last one, they're bolded for a reason, you know, facility, facility issues, budget, transportation, official shortages. Those are challenges that have been there before, and they continue to be more upfront and a bigger issue. As you probably know, the pool situation is a tough one. We have two of the best swimming teams in the state, our pool is in trouble. And I'm concerned that what's happening right now, if it happened in the middle of those ones, it's gonna be a real, real challenge for our teams. And that's concerning to me. Even when it is up and running, it's undersized, it doesn't have a diving board, those are challenges that from my standpoint, I, you know, I want to value all of our student athletes. So we look at that, our budgets, challenges, athletic budgets have either been stagnant or cut for a long time. And they're supported appropriately, but even a, even a, even a no cut is a cut when the transportation costs or the officials' costs are all going up. So again, not saying you don't know about transportation is a challenge. We've been lucky, I think those ones are pretty good for us, but there's places where I am actually to accommodate teams that show up at one in the afternoon for a bet because they can't get a bus here later than that. So they show up at our school in the afternoon and we're like, posting on this awkward. And then finally, official shortages, you know, if you come to any sporting events, you know that we're, we're always struggling. I got a couple of applications, depending on the industry, you know, for that official. Name your favorite sport, you can get to train 35 parts if they're ready to go. We have a definite shortage for officials and name the sport. So again, I recognize that's, that's quick. But there's a lot of information there that I'd be willing to add, answering the questions that you have right now or in the future.
Ryan, I sometimes rattle around back in my mind, have we had an officials' training class or something like that a few years ago? Try to address this issue, is there anything we could develop?
We still do, we still do. The challenge is that's a slow process. So same gentleman, just as I mentioned before, teaches an official task. He brought it over here, we still run it, it runs, it's successful. The challenge you have is that you're teaching 16 through 18 year olds, who then a lot of times are now going off to college, whatever. Our, our long-term goal is, hey, they get to college job for them. They can't officiate as a junior in high school, come out, do their peers' games, they probably have to wait at least to get to college. So we're hoping in the long game, it helps us because the official population is aging. But you know, if somebody goes off to UW Madison, maybe he's doing a game at Corona or Middle Tended, but we're probably not gonna get the direct outcomes of that right now. I think it helps us a little bit.
You know, one little, one little comment I would make is all of us can probably help with officials by just thanking them. I went to one of our boys' baseball games that was out of town, it was in Whitefish Bay, happened to park next to an official. So after the game, I got to my car at the same time he's at his car, he's changing his shirt. And I said, thanks so much for doing this, contributing your time. And he just looked like I was from another planet. He just, wow, thank you, that makes up for the four jerks that were swearing at me. And I thought, oh my gosh, I didn't really even notice that. But you're essentially volunteering your time, you're doing this for kids, and then you have people in the stands yelling and screaming at you. So even if everyone thinks a ref or official at some point, maybe that helps a little bit.
I had a couple of questions. I know you were saying that there was improvements is this decreasing number of advisors for the clubs. What is the criteria? Is it just, does it go beyond faculty members or is there a place for, like say, if there's people that are passionate about something where they can reach out to you or sign up?
Yeah, it definitely is. I mean, I think the challenge is sometimes you have situations. So like I give Student Senate as an example, that would be a harder one for a non-staff person because they're doing a lot of meetings during the day or around right after the school day and so on. Obviously, we have non-staff employees too. So that happens. So it's not, you know, I think every job's a little different in terms of like whether it would fit for a non-staff, but they're certainly welcome to. You know, we have non-staff advisors now, we always do. So certainly it's an opportunity, it's just a harder thing to reach out and find the person that that's gonna fit for their schedule and for us.
Quick question, I did have an opportunity to look at your athletic participation numbers. And I can appreciate you mentioned earlier that there's kind of an ebb and flow to the numbers. And sometimes you really never know exactly what causes gains or losses. But it seemed pretty significant around lacrosse. Over the last 10 years, we're literally half of what we used to track to that score. Is that a, is that kind of a national phenomenon or is that more of a school thing or?
Yeah, I don't, I looked at it too, I saw it, but you know, we have, we're, we have really large numbers in the area. I mean, we had multiple teams. I can't, I don't have a good answer for that as to why it was so big. I mean, I do know that this community in terms of lacrosse was at the front runner of lacrosse, right? Lacrosse is catching on in the state the last five years.
Yeah.
But it was catching on here in the early 2000s. And so I don't have an answer for that other than now some of our, our track numbers have fallen back a little bit, they hurt the track numbers at one point. But yeah, there, it is a significant number, so I'm not for this shit.
Yeah, so specifically with regards to sportsmanship, is there anything as a board that we can do for your advisors or coaches to help better perpetuate good sportsmanship?
As a board, I mean, I think, so there's two parts of it that are concerning and we're hit on one in terms of like making officials. I think, you know, adults need to have perspective, right? These are high school games, these are kids, these are officials not making money. So I don't know as a board, how you're gonna tell adults to have perspective, but that's the challenge that we have, is to try to communicate perspective. And so for me, like I try to, like, we do great things in terms of our club activities and athletics. And people want you to be the base tier, but I also don't go crazy on the tier, right? Because you kind of want, kind of model it a little bit so that people don't get too high or too low. And the problem is we get a little too high, get a little too low, right? In terms of our students, that's more our part to just continue to educate what's, what's appropriate. Because again, I think what's really deep in here is the social media part, right? And this is the social media part, not to say it's all happening on social media, but it's like, you get so used to typing something on a tweet or a post that you wouldn't say directly to somebody's face. So now when you're in the stands, you yell something and maybe it's not horrible, but you're like, you look back and say, hey, would you yell that to your sister? Or would you yell that to your older one? And so it's, I can't answer that to say what board specifically can do. But I'll tell you this, as it, what I do, what I do is once in a while, I will address student activity that's inappropriate. And I will get backlash from adults saying, you know what, that's, you know, that's a good advantage or why are you cutting, taking away their fun? And I, and I'll tell them, well, they just said bleep, 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 bleep to them. Do you think that's appropriate? Well, just let them have fun. And I'm like, no, we can't treat it like a classroom, but at some level, we have to have an expectation. You know, similar to that, right? We can't be name calling and profane and things like that. And I know what happens, and there's only so much we can control. So I'm sorry, that's a long-winded answer to, I don't know what you can do, but it's supportive knowing that I don't specifically walk into the student section to take away somebody's fun, right? I'm not there, that isn't a fun experience for me to walk up and to talk to a, a grown adult saying, why didn't you tell that person the blah, 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 blah? And please don't do that because that could lead to a bigger competition, but sometimes I have to do it. And sometimes you may hear about it and say, wow, AD's no fun at all, he's trying to take away all the fun. And I believe me, I'm only doing it because it's an extreme situation that probably, it doesn't represent us well.
Thanks.
So that's not a very good answer, but that was a rambling word in English.
Other questions?
Thank you so much.
A lot of data on there, if you have questions, let me know, I'll try to answer the question.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan, thanks for being here. Ryan does a great job and as you've heard, when you've got nearly every student in the school participating, he's got a big job on his shoulders. The, our activities and athletic department is larger than most high schools. So yeah, that just puts it in perspective, the amount of work on his plate. And it's fortunate that we work with all these great kids and families that are involved in school and that helps our academic achievements as well as the corporate achievement, so.
Laura, do you see, because I know like the students, they have an opportunity to buy activities pass, so pretty much get them into athletic events. Do you see those people signing up for the activity pass? Is it like up, flat, going down?
When I'm at events, I guess the team, yeah, I don't think it's dropped.
It's pretty good to say, but again, we had two years of kind of a wrench in it.
Sure.
I was concerned and I thought maybe the live streaming portion would knock it down, it hasn't. But again, I think we haven't totally maximized for live shooting, they go, but it gets down from where it was 10 years ago, 15 years, everywhere. I mean, just in terms of the availability of entertainment on your phone and online, athletic events are followed the same way they were in the early 2000s.
You may have events at two, keep one another.
Yeah, there's a lot of those, right? Yeah, I, I know that is on my nightly schedule, I can't.
Well, thank you again, Ryan. We'll move on to communications and comments from members of the public. We have at this point, just one ticker and that's in turn across. We have at this point, just one ticker and that's international cross.
It would be better to use the community conversation for this. I realize how absurd it becomes waiting. I want to offer some points of parental concern based on proceedings at some recent meeting meetings. We witnessed the desire from some board members to, for example, vet professional development plans. If I understand correctly, it's something that we're seeing from other board members in other districts like Catamaran. We witnessed some board members proposing that they insert themselves into recruitment and hiring process. And I'm thinking of the June twenty seventh policy committee meeting. I fear that both of those proposals, and I know they're still ending up in discussion, but I fear that both of those efforts play into a form of what I'll call paranoia that exists in some parts of our community, a fear that indoctrination is going on. And this is unfounded fear and it ought not to be indulged. It is, it is not the role, and I know not alone in thinking this of the board, to be micromanaging some of these aspects of our school district's operations. So that's, that's one thing. As we're coming up to the one year anniversary of the passing of what is called an educational gag order policy three, three, three. That also is speeding into the manufactured issue of critical race theory. I want to reemphasize that there are only negative outcomes associated with this and similar policies. Unfortunately, for both educators and students in our community, this policy also now exists word for word, I believe, in Merton's handbook, policy seven oh four one. It doesn't rule out Tom Wark three, three, three. So it's replicated. And I know policy three, three, three is due to be discussed this evening. It should be rescinded and replaced. As I said, almost a year ago, it is based on a manufactured issue about a mischaracterized academic discipline using vague definitions which in its enforcement restricts how history and social sciences are taught. It creates reputational risk and should it result in the curtailment of curriculum, potential legal risks. Recent developments in the Muskego Norway School District regarding a book that touches on the internments of Japanese Americans in the Second World War mirrors past experiences here with similar books. I mentioned one personally that affected my student in two thousand and five. I noted there was an issue with the person being a wallflower. These experiences suggest educational gag orders are bad policies. It's worth suspending the policy and if necessary, kicking it back to the committee. We have big challenges to focus on. The attraction, retention and development of teachers, the funding and enrollment of the school being two priorities. Our board administration needs to conserve their time and energy and resources to focus on these issues rather than the cultural items.
Thank you so much. We have time. If anyone hadn't signed up and would like to contribute some comments here. If not, we will move on and we'll go to committee reports. First up is curriculum.
We did not have a meeting this past month. We will have one on August eleventh. And we will bring the bringing in a student and a principal to discuss the eighth period versus tenth period day, which should be very interesting. So I encourage everyone to attend that and also some other issues you might talk about.
Thank you. Next up is finance and legislation. Chairperson Hudson.
Yes, thank you. I would direct you to the notes on this meeting minutes. Basically, it was designed to be a kind of free flowing set of ideas for anyone who had thoughts on how to meet some of these budgetary challenges that we are all aware of at this point. I know that seven of the nine of us were there. We had a good discussion. We talked about everything from a report that Ben gave us from Masby and the representative there, what she was able to learn. We'll learn more about that later this evening and another agenda item, as I understand. We talked about what we have done in the past in terms of budgetary issues, trying to communicate and market our school to the community in terms of trying to need support for referendum. Some have been not successful in the past, one barely more recently. Talk briefly about referendum rules, what can we as board members do? It's a very big difference between what we can do here using school resources versus what we can do on our own, using our own resources. When we walk out of this building and are on our private emails or whatever, we can stay and do whatever we want. We have within the law, we have first amendment rights to speak of what we wish, when we wish. Not so if we are using school resources. Talk about just various strategies to make connections with the community, whether it be forming small groups or you know, using other kinds of groups that already exist. I don't know if we specifically mentioned this, but for example, going to a Rotary Club or Lions Club meetings or wherever. There are lots of ways hopefully that we can still try to get the word out to the community. We also have a number of advocacy, well, informational kinds of publications, ones coming out in August. Goes all the members in the community. It's a website that's been increased Instagram, Facebook, all kinds of that presence to try to garner further support in the community. It does appear that there may be a need for a referendum in the not too distant future. So better off, we can be with, inform our community of the needs here, the better support we might find for that. That's, that's kind of what we're about.
Thank you very much. And so we then have a budget hearing coming up.
Yes. So we have a budget hearing coming up on August seventeenth. Budget hearing followed immediately by the annual meeting in typically in the North Campus Theater. Once a year in August, public is invited. Very frequently, we get an audience something like this. So it's an unfortunate situation where we don't get to share our state report card and budget. Bang for the buck, as a former member of the board used to say, we allot our money here. And I wish more people would intend to learn that. That's coming up. Both those meetings, budget hearing and annual meeting on August seventeen.
And do you have a finance schedule?
Not there. We, there was understanding coming out of our last meeting on July fifth that we would, based on the busyness of people summer, that we tried to get something on the schedule.
Thank you very much. Next up is Philiny Brown, Chairperson Beniker.
Yeah, we have a couple of things going on here. The first one is the swimming pool. I know the board received an email, I believe, last Thursday or Friday about this. But unfortunately, we did have to close down the pool swimming area because it was unsafe for both swimmers and also employees. So a couple of things happened. It was coincidentally, Kim and I, Kevin was going to give us a tour of the swim area. We deleted by week. We came and he's like, there's a lot happened with the last twenty four hours. And a couple of things in the swimming pool, it is about fifty years old. And, you know, it's not running what it like used to. Parts are hard to come by, sometimes non-existent. A couple of things that caused shutting down the pool and just when I said shutting down the pool too. The kids' swimming lessons are there during the summers. We suspended all the swim lessons through the end of the summer, given the circumstances. Is that correct, Laura?
Actually, we think we might be able to get back up and running in the next week or two.
Okay.
Just because of some parts being able to be located. And so the August fourth meeting, Kevin Leescom will give a full update. Hopefully, we'll be open by then.
Okay. And the two problems that occurred, it was basically a circuit breaker failure. We do have one that's put in place for adequate capacity. I'm just reading off Kevin's email here as a temporary solution. So looking into parts, so it looks like we may get some updates soon. The other one was with the lighting, pretty much the lighting contractor that provides power for all the pool deck lights and also down in the basement, the mechanical room. Were a failure there. So that is, you know, the update about the pool. So it looks like there's some things that are happening now. But I think it's one of those things that we just need to closely monitor and evaluate. Again, just both for student and employee safety. The second thing was the building, you may have heard in the buildings and grounds committee meeting in the past, the barn or the shed area is in some major problems there. And they have, using my mechanical trusting, where basically one side of the building kind of concave down. They have a temporary solution, putting it up there to, you know, make it safe for employees. But it is one of those things that it's quite old and looking to, you know, into our budget to see if we can replace them in the near future. So that's my cheery update on buildings and grounds. So.
You're really doing a great job selling the August fourth meeting.
Yeah, that's something you can, I'm going publication of buildings. But our next meeting is August fourth. And just to make a note, that is on a Thursday morning at six forty five.
I can add one cheery note to our time with Kevin and some of our staff. While we went above the grounds, something I was really unaware of is that I don't know how many acres this school is.
One hundred seventeen.
Thank you. Like a cornucopia of information, but I mean, it's huge. And I have no idea that they actually employ a staff of five for all of the outside maintenance. They take care of everything. We met some of those gentlemen that that morning. And again, kind of like along the lines of thanking the ref. When you see those gentlemen outside, as we did that morning, we thank them because they really do a fine job of maintaining all of our grounds. It always looks very pristine. And it's, I just had no idea that it was just a very minimum amount of staff that did all that for us.
I think, and Kevin does, to add on to that, I think Kevin does an excellent job with buildings to ground and getting the most out of. I mean, he's got a challenge. It's not brand new buildings that are coming up. He's, some of these buildings are on license for it, it seems like it. They do a good job. And I know Kim and I were in the parking lot for a little bit and it was a nice crew. I mean, three of the people stopped by and asked us, you know, if we had any questions on anything. He has a good, he has a good staff that they really will come to us.
Jared, based off of the pool condition, are you going to try to get a, another tour scheduled about it, get into the weeds on failures?
I'm thinking that maybe it is, maybe our meeting on the fourth. Maybe it is at North Campus there and, you know, kind of look at what's, what's going on.
Yeah, if not before that, I know what my feeling is there. I've got a bunch of resources at my fingertips that if there's issues with mining stuff, I can
That would be.
Pull some resources in and I've got contacts all over the place to get electrical contactors.
Okay.
If I can get, build a list, I can put some resources.
That would be awesome. I'm sure Kevin would be very welcome to.
Thank you. Okay.
Kim, I can just say something. Forgive me if I bring up these old things, but it's nice to know some of this stuff regarding the people on staff in the outside. Few years back, I remember there was a time when there was a snowstorm coming, blizzard, big one. And a couple of folks stayed overnight and slept on cots so that they could clean or clear the parking lot for the school buses for the next day. So they're gonna be there cleaned up. Quite extraordinary.
Really impressive.
Thank you, Chairperson Benker. And next up is personnel with Chairperson Lerner.
Well, so we had a overlong meeting. First topic that took the first hour was working with Bob Butler to kind of define the outlines of a new policy to guide future presidents in the event that there is ever a grievance necessary in the opinion of the superintendent. No grievances are expected. And so we thought. So was thought that this was a perfect time to try and address this issue of superintendents are entitled to make grievances of our other staff. And it is a little scary because a superintendent ordinarily can create our agenda, which means that we can hear their grievances every single month of this meeting. And if they're doing a formal grievance, we want guidance in place for the president. Well, I'll need to circle back of Bob Butler just to firm up where we're at on that, that it would be a formal policy will be proposed at the next personnel meeting. I'm anticipating that to be in September as well. The animal came in explaining that the outside contracted organization that provided all that services to some of our students and at South Campus was, I believe, withdrawing. And we decided to staff that in-house, which I think is good. And it allows us to give, you know, solid focus to the kinds of students that I think school helps the most and who appreciate it the least. So our old dead kids are some of our specialties comes to providing an incentive to show up for school every day with the best. We did a review of some information at my request and that the, upon the inquiry of a number of board members. So Jeff Gross presented a comparative analysis of the six days that are given to staff at Arrowhead relative to other schools. So a comparison chart that I think showed that Arrowhead was in about the middle of the pack as far as those days. The yeah, so that information I think is still available with my back over the agenda. It was good information to know and I always, it's reassuring to see that, you know, we're not a like to the higher to the low on that issue. There was also a in-depth review of our step and lane compensation system. And that is one of those things that takes a couple of passes that to kind of appreciate the where you enter that chart as a rookie teacher and how you work your way into a you know, more senior role and are able to predict your compensation that goes through your career. And so Jeff did an excellent job of reviewing it better than I did. Again, that's information that's available regularly and upon request, board members if they want it. And then last, at Brandon's request, we did an analysis of a consultant usage at Arrowhead. This is a topic that he had raised and had never been considered by me. And it was useful to take a look at how much we spend on consultants and what respects that report to is attached to the agenda. And I think showed that other than a legal bill that we got in relation to the sale of our, that our consultant use is pretty fairly priced and modest. And so one of those topics that I'm glad we looked at, probably will look at again just to make sure that we're not spending money. Next meeting to be determined. If it has to be in August, I'm sure we'll get it on the schedule, but I'd love your group. People were so similar.
Thank you very much. Next up is policy. Chairperson Paris.
All right. So in opposition to giving anybody time off this summer, I decided to I apologize. There's a lot of, a lot of things to go through and I appreciate everybody's willingness to, to, to come to these meetings. There's a lot of, a lot of things that we're trying to
There's a lot of, a lot of things that we're trying to wrap her head around as a board that's existed for a while and a new board. So having said that, I'll refer you to the notes from the June 27th meeting. There's, there are quite a few different things that we talked about here. We started off talking about 504 plans. Chairperson Bennerker had a great idea to add verbiage to our policies with regards to this and that was well noted for everybody that I'm hoping that everybody took a look at that. I think it was well received and we'll have a discussion and action item shortly to, to further approve this. Mr. Langer, thank you for your patience with me and revising and re-revising your verbiage for policy 131, policy procedure with regards to filling board vacancies. And I'm sorry, that was 113 and 131. So I think we've come to some, some good conclusions with regards to that. Verbiage is all part of your hyperlinks. We're going to have a discussion and action item on that as well. Changes to policy 121, some minor changes there with regards to the handbook being retitled. So it's going to be a discussion and action item with regards to that. Policy 154, or 151.4 and 151.1, just some minor changes with regards to those. Those are all, again, added to your hyperlinks. And then finally, with regards to that meeting, policy 222, the hiring of professional staff. That was, that was raised this evening already. The nice thing about this is that as a board, we were reminded that with regards to administrative positions, that we are invited to be a part of those interviews, which I was not aware of. So that was helpful and so that, that will continue to move forward on change. There was continued discussion with regards to talking about, and I think we actually continued this on the next meeting, so I'll continue discussing that. We get to the next meeting after we go through discussion and action items for each one of these. So having said that, we'll move forward to firstly, discussion and action to approve. Is that something you announced? That's something you announced, yeah?
I think so.
Good.
But I thank you.
Yes.
And we do have a lot of new policy to approve. And I thank you for sliding through it for everyone who does come to those meetings. It gets very tedious, but I think with what, so I appreciate everyone's effort. The first one is discussion action to approve the new policy 362.1. Section 504 plans.
I'm grateful to Gerald Bennerker for raising a topic that I was not at all aware of and I think it's a wonderful law that helps benefit our kids who need minor accommodations that make a major impact on their ability to participate. I think it's a well-crafted policy and I will adapt to this.
Any further discussion? Then policy 362.1, section 504 plans. Thank you. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one up is draft policy 131. Board officers.
I'm going to jump on this one too. It's the one that I drafted, that flyer that Chris would thank me for going back at the policy that could have been better phrased in the first place. And so it's useful to get some editorial comment that tried to incorporate and this is the rule that says that we have to have nine sitting board members and they're going to elect a president, just so that we avoid the possibility of a tie. And the, the same rules would apply for the appointment of any other officer, except that this board has the ability to waive that requirement if we vote unanimously. There's a, that is the policy and then there's a procedure to follow that essentially echoes that. I humbly would refrain from moving to adopt my own policy. Hope somebody else does.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to adopt policy 131, board officers.
We don't have to board on the procedure.
Usually if it's a new procedure, the board does vote and if it's just a modification, typically that happens behind the scenes. But we brought it forward just because it was like to the policy.
So that'd be 131 instead of 113?
We do have a policy 131.
13, oh, okay, never mind.
I know, it's confusing.
So you're not saying Laura that we should be voting on procedure for 131?
Or? I'd make it simple and just make a motion that we approve the procedures.
Yes.
Make your reflection about.
Do I have a motion to approve policy procedure 131?
Yes.
Yes. I said.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries to policy 131, adoption of the board officers duties in the vice president. Next up, discussion and action to approve revised procedure 113, filling board vacancies.
Make a motion to approve the revised procedure 113.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to adopt procedure 113, filling board vacancies. Next up, discussion and action to approve revised policy 121, policy development.
I moved the, approve the policy 121 as barely modified.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to adopt policy 121. Next up, discussion and action to approve policy 151.4, public participation at board meetings. Minor changes.
I think there might be a typo on this. The red there on this paragraph says the board appreciated. I think it means appreciates. So it's just a typo. Should be written up there, I believe.
I would have moved the, read up policy 151.4 as modified by Mr. Thompson.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to adopt policy 151.4, public participation at board meetings with the change of official. Two seconds.
First time.
Okay, next up. Discussion and action to approve the new procedure 151.4, public participation at board meetings.
And I'll just jump in, this was coming out of that committee meeting. The committee talked about simply taking our current and existing pamphlet about participation at board meetings and turning that into a procedure. So that way members of the public can see the pamphlet and hard copy while they're here or they can see the full procedure in pamphlet form online and a procedure policy online.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I should move, one second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Policy 150, action procedure. What point, where public participation at board meetings? Next up, discussion and action to approve revised policy 151.1. And procedure 11.1. Policy 151.1, board meeting notifications, agendas minutes. Minor changes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Policy 151.1. Procedure 151.1, board meeting notifications, agendas, minutes. Do I have motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Opposed? Motion carries to adopt procedure 151.1, board meeting notifications. Did you think that we?
So.
Yes.
All right. So our next meeting was on July 8th and just a little recap of that. Once again, thank you for your time. Policy 222, just a little bit of a change in verbiage to director level administrator position. Let's see. I discussed the idea of chairpersons. This is not, that will be a discussion and action item. By the way, I also had the discussion with the, with the group on the idea of the chairperson position and the potential to save money by eliminating those positions. Laura helped to educate us all with regards to how each one of those positions also comes with a principal certificate, is that correct, Laura?
Correct, principal license.
The principal's license, so that they are able to, to evaluate other, other staff people, helped us to understand it a little bit better, what they do and what they bring to the table. So we appreciate that, most superintendent. Mr. Bennerker, let's see, we changed, we added a month to procedure 213. Mr. Bennerker added or brought to our attention that we had missed the month of September in there, so we added July, August, September, so it's just kind of a little bit of an acumen. It's also still important. Suggestion was made to create a new policy, policy 312 with regards to the scheduling and the wording. Let's, let's see. This was actually, this was brought to the table by myself for the idea of having the board have the final say with regards to schedule, the schedule changes that may be forthcoming in the near future, since that had not been addressed anywhere at this point. Let's see, our superintendent added a correction to policy 332 for selection materials wording for media specialist, media personnel to be consistent. And we did make change to policy 333, so that should make some people happy. Our community, we added the words non-discrimination statement and sex discrimination complaint process. So there was a change made to policy 333. For policy 332, for selection of materials, I brought up the idea of having more of a review process by the board with regards to instructional materials. We got a pretty in-depth discussion with regards to this. I have a feeling we're going to come back to this at some point, but that was, that was, that took up quite a little, quite a lot of time. I also had discussed the idea of bringing in a newspaper called The Times to our school. You'll see, I had sent out something as an attachment with regards to the validity of this, this newspaper as actually being very centered rather than a far right leaning paper. We hadn't come to any, any finalization with regards to that, but that's, that's going to probably have more discussion moving forward, since there was no finalization there. Let's see, for policy 332, selection of materials. We talked a little bit more about making sure all materials are relevant to the subject being taught. We had heard the discussion with the idea of possible doubt provision for students might be feasible, if that's, if that's something that, that, that would help to, it's basically, it was basically the idea of being more transparent with the public and helping the public know that, you know, what's, what's being taught, especially with regards to any, any, any videos or anything on that level. Policy 351, graduation requirements, there's some minor things that were updated with regards to that to mess, to match our current course titles. And then finally, Mr. Bennerker inquired about adding the idea of a personal finance course for graduation. I've often had this discussion with my siblings, saying, man, I wish I would have learned this at high school, but that, that was just basically a topic of conversation. Nothing, nothing finalized with regards to that, just, just a great idea from Mr. Bennerker. Let's see, and then we're just going to keep moving forward. Let's see, future agenda items include continued review of the policy handbook. The next meeting is going to be on July 29th at 6:45. Again, I really appreciate everybody's time coming to these meetings and I know they're a little bit more frequent at this point, but at some point, I think we're going to level off and not have any for a while, so.
Promise is promise.
Thank you. So we'll move along to the approval process. First up is discussion, action to approve revised policy 222, professional staff hiring. I'll make a motion to approve.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is discussion, action to approve new policy 312, school schedule. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
We did not draft this in committee. I was charged with drafting this and just as a comment, the way I worded it, and obviously or the board can change this, but any permanent revision to the school day schedule. Now, permanent revision, that doesn't mean if something changes, it's forever for 200 years. But I was going after, for instance, once a month, we change the schedule to have a homeroom period. Well, I don't think you want to be having special meetings to approve having a 20-minute homeroom or something like that. So I think the intent was if there's a major schedule change, if we're moving from a 10-period day to a nine-period day to something else, I think that was the intention, but I hope I captured this properly.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Absolutely, yes.
I'd move that we had that policy 312 presented.
I thought I needed more. I think it was, I think it was moved in seconds. We just need to vote. We just need to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to adopt policy 312. Discussion, action to approve revised policy 332, selection of materials. I'd like the law to approve.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to adopt policy 332. Discussion, action to approve policy 333, discrimination, non-discrimination within curriculum. I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any additional comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to approve addition to policy 333. Discussion and action to approve revised policy 351, graduation requirements. I'd make the motion to approve.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next meeting date is July 29th, and then we'll move on. Thank you so much for getting through policy. Next up is WASP. And I wanted to share just some comments from a relatively long article that was put forth through WASP and originated in Wisconsin Policy Forum entitled, "Wisconsin Ranks in School Spending Tax Burden Fall Together." And Lynn can kind of couple some comments that she has relative to a recent meeting that she's had with the WASP representative, perhaps after I've covered a few things that I think are really pertinent to our discussions, our budget discussions. So from this article dated July this year. "The latest per pupil school spending data show Wisconsin's ranking relative to other states continuing to fall. By no coincidence, the comparative drop in education spending, the single largest expense for state and local taxpayers, has occurred alongside a drop in Wisconsin's tax burden. As always, voters and state and local leaders must weigh the trade-offs between taxes paid and publicly provided. Recently released data from the US Census Bureau showed that the 2020 Wisconsin's federal $12,740 per pupil on elementary and secondary education are 5.6% below the national average. Wisconsin's spending ranked its 25th, 25th highest among 50 states in 2020, down from 24th previous year and 11th in 2002, the earliest year available data on the Census Bureau website. The caps on school revenues in the 2021 through 2023 state budget may drive additional drops in Wisconsin rankings in the coming years." I'm just going to capture some excerpts, but I think these are really relevant again. Under a section entitled "School Spending Tied to Tax Burden", "The drop in the state's per pupil spending rank occurred over the same year that Wisconsin was reducing its tax burden when the share of its residents income aided state and local taxes. From 2002 to 2019, national figures are not yet available for 2020. This percentage dropped from 11.2% to 10.3%. This drop of 0.9 percentage points may seem relatively insignificant, but it amounted to 0.59 billion less of state and local tax revenues collected in 2019 alone. State and local taxes are the primary funding source for pre-K through 12 public education in Wisconsin and nationally. For example, in 2019, state and local revenues funded 93.4% of Wisconsin's school spending and 92.3% of the nation's. In addition, pre-K through 12 education is the largest expense for state and local governments combined, both in Wisconsin and across the country. That relationship makes it difficult to hold down taxes without consequently limiting education spending. Comparing Wisconsin's total tax ranking among other states to its school spending, ranking reinforces this point. From 2002 to 2019, Wisconsin dropped from collecting the fifth highest percentage of personal income in state and local taxes in the nation to collecting the 23rd highest. As noted above, Wisconsin dropped from spending the 11th highest amount on secondary and elementary education to spending the 24th highest over those same years. Lastly, in the section entitled Decisions and Tradeoffs, it just kind of sums things up and says, "In their deliberations, voters and elected officials alike may wish to consider Wisconsin's pre-K through 12 spending compared to the nation as well as other available data such as how well the current resources are meeting student needs. Voters and officials' decisions will ultimately impact both the North pocketbooks and the capacity of public school districts to serve and educate children." So along these same lines, Lynn had a significant meeting recently with a WASP representative. If you can kind of sum that up.
Yeah, I can go ahead. So I ended up meeting with Chris Klow. He's the government relations specialist for WASP. I ended up getting his name through congratulations email or actually phone call from WASP and just kind of reminding him that we've got services that we can reach out to him for. So we had a cup of coffee and kind of wanted to understand what their efforts are around this topic and understanding where we kind of fall amongst other school districts. So I can give you some of our highlights with it. One, we're about one-third of the schools are gonna be underbudgeted, where two-thirds are gonna be doing just fine coming out of what they're forecasting. DPI actually did put in an estimate for July 1st for their budget, which there's some potential information there that Arrowhead may be down about 8% from where we're at. And this, and their final budget is required by October 15th. Now, the interesting part on this was WASP and the superintendent's association of which that one was last up. Thank you. They were actually both told that DPI was going to invite them to a meeting to discuss the budget, what they're opposed. According to Chris, DPI is sort of a mess right now, if I want to basically phrase it the way he did it. They have a lot of turnover right now, and they haven't even been asked or put a scheduled meeting on the books with them yet. So they were hoping to have a voice in the actual budget, but he doesn't know how likely that's gonna happen. Couple additional takeaways I have from him was some additional efforts that we can do as a board, as well as what we can do with the public is one, attend the CISA advocacy workshop that'll be coming up, I believe that he said was in November. He said that he'd be happy to come and talk to one of our school board meetings to be able to help educate the public. Him or the other gentleman that's on staff. Have our WASP representative in January. Votes on funding being more critical is one of the things that they should really lobby for. Whoever comes, all of those votes is where they really put their most efforts. In March, they typically have a Capitol Day, so anyone that can attend, have it be a public person, have it be school board members, have us go sit down with our representatives as well as speak in front of anyone that they're asking us to. So those were the things that he brought up there. Some additional things that I brought up with lobbying efforts that I've seen or used in the past, which we discussed. And I'd say in some ways, some of it went somewhere, so it kind of stayed put, was one, partnering with other school districts that are in that third to see if we can get a louder voice altogether as a collective. And then two, trying to get constituents also to contact the representative, so in that way then, the more noise we can make around the topic, hopefully in that way then we can get more rally support behind it as well. So that was what came out of our first meetings. He's happy to meet with me additionally as more topics come up. So I feel like that will not be our last meeting together. So I'll be happy to bring more information coming forward too.
Thank you so much. I'm really glad you took the initiative to meet with us. Appreciate that.
So I'd be curious to follow up the question again. I'd be happy to keep with you as well. More conversation and dialogue back and forth, but this, this year being an election year, I wonder if there is a different approach WASP to more proactively, not, not within one party, but within both, to really ask those questions and ask for that detailed plan as to what they are going to do for the state funding through education or of education? Just, just to see what they're currently thinking on both sides. I think being an election year, we will hear things differently than what we will for the official, the archive for the election. And you can obviously play that in a sense of the game. But, but I think there's a different strategy with the election.
Yeah, he didn't talk about as much about it being an election year and what they're asking out of candidates per se. Right now, they're having their meetings to kind of finalize what their message is gonna be once those elected officials get in.
Yep.
Really around there being inflation with the constant wages going up, with renovation work that's needed, things like that. The other one that was kind of interesting was piggybacking off the article that you just gave us and details on Wisconsin, compared to our neighboring states are behind everyone else in spending when it comes to Minnesota, Michigan, and Illinois. He did not know Iowa off the top of his head. So that was gonna be, they're kind of finalizing their top three messages, but those were the two that he shared with me.
If anyone would like a copy of this, I don't know if you were emailed this through WASP, but I can certainly write copies to get you. There's a lot more data in there. This month. It's ultra current then. It's very insightful.
They do have a blog that you can get automatic emails from on legislation, as well as, they also have a monthly webinar that you can either watch in person or you can watch the recording afterwards. But that was actually one of his biggest things was there's not a lot of people that put passion and energy around legislation efforts. So that was actually one of the things I cited, that wishes the membership as a whole or school boards would be more actively engaged. And he said not too many people ask for coffee.
So just to comment, since Jeff wasn't here to put real numbers on that, the 8% reduction in budget, this $2.4 million coming out of what had been this year $31 million budget. Exactly the number. I'm not sure where $2.4 million.
Rate inflation, I think is what 8.1 has today.
9.1.
9.1.
So we went through the entire referendum. It's the $1.7 million that we got with our famous 69 quotes. Or the way.
Well.
Or at least it's gonna be the small finger of the thing.
Again, a lot of discussions, discussions moving forward. Choices to make. Plans to undertake. Thank you so much. Any update?
There, there wasn't any, any meetings or any involvement, but through our local inside source in CISA, we helped figure out kind of where CISA's funding is coming from. And it is, it is not through the state of Wisconsin, it's through schools that do the contracts. So we have a contract to fill, but so far, correct me if I'm wrong out of the audience, but I think $6.5-ish million of contracts through all the schools in our CISA group right now. There are other funding sources through federal grants. So I'm gonna dig into that a little bit more to understand kind of what, what are the federal grants? And is there additional thing that we can leverage to get our own additional federal grants to potentially help some of this as well? Or vote on this early in the investigations.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, business employee transactions. Going into resignations, retirements. I'll make the law to approve resignations, retirements.
I just have a quick comment I found out from my girls. I've been pushing them every single year to take Rick Witty's class in leadership. And they're finally signed up for next year, and he's leaving. And.
Of course, we'll continue.
Yeah. Yeah, Hozzy will, I think there, Hozzy has enough, but I think Ryan had Rick Witty this year for math. And she said a lot of his concepts work into his other classes. And so I just, I just wanna, I understand his reason for leaving, for family, there's no better reason. But I'm just sad to see that.
I would echo that. I've several times accepted resignations in my vote with regret. And I would certainly like to highlight that with Rick Witty, he's been an exceptional member of staff. And will be much missed. And understood that he's going close to home and his life is much better for him personally, but for him to.
Any further discussion?
I was just curious, are we in a, because I noticed there, with these resignations, can we get back, they'll get, or are we still?
One or two of them are on the higher list, and there's others at the next meeting that'll be coming forward. Yep, so all underway. Um. So motions to approve and need to vote. All in favor of accepting the resignations and retirements for approval of the resignations and retirement for the folks listed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to accept the resignation and retirement. Next up is contracts and letters of appointment. I'll make the law to approve the contracts and letters of appointment.
Sorry.
Any further discussion?
May I ask one question, perhaps? Oh, Ryan's fine. You know anything about our girls' dance team head coach, where she came from or what?
Sorry, that I think I don't know.
But she's new this, for this coming, for this coming school year, is that right? Or was she on a partial from last year, you know, or? I'm sorry, I'm on the spot, that's not clear.
No, this list, most of these athletic coaches are not new hires. Most of these, because though our athletic coaches really don't have a contract, it's a at-will position. So every year we give the list of here's all of the names. Some of them might be new and others are just the same existing people. I believe the dance, our pockets, dance team coach. Just looking down the list. I think her name is Tammy, and if that's.
Yes, Tammy Dennis.
I think that's the same person from last.
It's, it's just a kind of curiosity.
I'm not 100% sure on that.
So for, which I'm spot.
Any updates on the issue with the hockey coach, is that kind of day with the mullets? Um, well. Clearly, Marja Ellsworth appears as the selected candidate put through by Ryan. Our folks this evening would approve that candidate. I, I did have a discussion with Brian Mallett last week. And at this point, he cannot tell me exactly what the fallout will be. Certainly the implication was that there would be fallout. So at this point, we don't know. Okay. Just curious. And I guess that was, you know, in part the reason for my call is to ask through consideration of some type of heads up, as clearly the boys hockey season begins. There are a lot of kids' activities and certainly there's a physical responsibility in our part around this situation. And I ask for a heads up as appropriate to know how to proceed. Thank you.
I'd just like to say for the record for, for Brian and Don and the Mallett family, how much Arrowhead appreciates everything their family continues to do for hockey, for the ice rink here. I, I think they, they are a wonderful family. They, they've given very unselfishly and. Very unselfishly and uh and I I truly hope it continues. Uh, the vote tonight has is is not a vote. Uh, against against the Mallett family in any way. Uh, and I just want for the record, uh, it's been noted that. That we had Arrowhead uh high regards to the Malletts.
I thank you for that and I strong agreement.
Yeah, well said.
Thank you.
Maybe one other comment unrelated to that though, but before we vote, just a recognition and appreciation for every name that is on this list. Just look at what their their wage or salary is versus the time that they put in. It doesn't even come close to hitting minimum wage.
Oh, right. Excellent. Thank you for recognizing that. That means a lot.
That's yeah, for sure. So just appreciation and recognition they put in. They obviously love the sport. We're not paying them for what their time is worth. So thank you to all of you.
And some folks have been doing this for decades.
Yeah.
Laura, can I ask, is the book cover correct?
Um, I would imagine it is because all of these are were approved by the board in the hand.
Probably not.
Is that a typo?
It says seventy nine dollars.
Wow.
Well, it is only a half tank position.
Every dollar.
Each. We're not getting to $2.4 million out of that.
Okay, can we can we approve this list pending clarification on their payment structure?
Yeah, if that's inaccurate, we'll make sure we pay them.
Okay.
But it is quite low.
Katie's worth more than seven.
Any other discussion around this? Okay, extensive list. Um, all in favor of approving the entire list of contracts and letter of appointment. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, uh, next up, annual approval of required reports and proclamations. I'll make the motion to approve this full safety drill report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion around school safety drills report?
Just were you going to just very briefly explain what each of these is perhaps or just a thirty second?
Sure, most most of these are required by law and one of them is required by your local policy. So the school safety drill report is required by law that we maintain this. Uh, we bring it forward to the board for approval. And then some of you will remember that also in October, after we have completed our state required. School safety intruder drill, I also must provide the board a report on that drill separate from the whole list.
And just another comment on there uh in terms of the evacuation time on these hats off and all that. That's that's very quick.
Got these kids well trained.
That's impressive.
You know, here's a little secret. It pulls the student left. Excellent. Um. When it gets to May and it's gorgeous, we tend to have those drills in the morning. Because if we did a drill, imagine at one forty five, how many might decide, let's just go around the horse.
Any further? Okay, um, all in favor of adoption of the uh. School drill report. Say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Next up is discussion and annual action on academic standards. No, no seclusion and restraint. How could I possibly? So a discussion, uh, annual action to accept the seclusion and restraint report. I'll make the most of it to accept those.
Second, a comment that uh this is one of those ones that I think is important, but we receive this information every year. I'm happy to see it told me what students. I'm sad to see that that we have anything.
Right, and and just a comment, this is, we don't, we don't make up that name, seclusion and restraint. It's the same. Report. It's the same statute in every school district. And if you look at, there was one student this year who five times had to be restrained in some way. That it's always, it's not about manhandling students, absolutely not. It's about keeping that student or other safe. And so anytime that there's going to be someone, even if it's a matter of guiding by shoulders. Out of the classroom or something like that, we need to file a report. So the parents receive a report immediately that day or phone call and. A written report and then we log that in.
Any further?
So it looks like over the past couple of years, it's it's a student with disabilities that's involved in this. I I imagine that comes with uh extra challenges.
Correct. Oftentimes it's it's students that have emotional or behavioral disabilities.
Okay, all in favor of uh adopting the seclusion or restraint report as written, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next up is discussion annual action on academic standards. Make the most of the approval.
My second.
And this report is also required by law. Um. The first school board meeting at the beginning of the school year, which the school year starts July first. Every school board in the state is to be adopting their standards. At Arrowhead, we we don't adopt like a canned set of standards. So you'll see in the statement that we've used over the last probably five years, six years since this was required. We have a mix. We use a blending of Wisconsin's model academic standards, some common core state standards. Locally developed standards and academic standards recommended by the reputable national organizations in the co in the. In the curricular areas. Are, I guess the broad standards are listed on the website in each academic, core academic areas webpage. And then certainly parents have more detail about the curriculum, the standards, the key units in each. Course syllabus. So it. After the board does their annual approval, then I go into one section of the website. And tomorrow this will, that same statement will be updated. So we're official that we can start with the school year, that we have standards to teach our students this coming school year.
Is there a way we can find out more as a board in what we're adopting from common core?
I was just gonna comment. I wonder if we need to strike Common Core. Because the state of Wisconsin adopts the model standards. Now, there's been a reup of most of those standards. In the last couple of years, I don't even know that the language of Common Core needs to.
I think that's probably a good idea because just a year ago or two years ago. Um, the Wisconsin Legislature actually put a halt to adopting new Common Core standards. Anything that was still in place was still fair game and some of that's woven into the state's.
So what's happened is, yeah, over over long ago that was now ten years or over long, those have all been, yeah, like you said, woven in. Or adopted or adapted. And now each one of those discipline areas have their own model standards that go through an entirely. Just a state of Wisconsin review process. So the Common Core is, I would understand it as.
Almost melanoid. Even when Common Core was, I don't know, I guess that new and hot topic. This district, many other districts in Wisconsin. We would look at the Common Core standards as the absolute foundation. We teach way up on most of those standards. I understand the national perspective of let's have good standards across our nation, but for a district like Arrowhead, we didn't need those. We were doing above and beyond. So. Yeah, the board could certainly adapt the statement, strike the Common Core state standards. I think we don't be very comfortable with that. Because of the rest of our standards and curriculum that are.
I move that we adopt the uh promotion as written with. Commons course and it's stricken from that statement.
I'll second.
And for the discussion on that. Okay, um, all uh all in favor of adopting those uh. Modified modified language on the academic standards. Academic standards, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for informing us on that.
Next up, discussion annual actions to accept the random drug testing report. I'll make the motion to accept the random drug testing report.
Second.
Is there anything you'd like to add on this one?
This one is not required by state law. This is per your school board policy and you could see the data by grade level. And then by percentage of students and um. Clearly nicotine is the the thing that pops the most. And second, so that would be THC.
What does this compare to past years? Is it pre on par or up to?
Pretty much on par with slight uptick from last year.
So what is, what is, what is the violation for nicotine? Just curious. What what ramifications is there? I mean, I'm just thinking back to when I was in high school, I think a lot of kids would have got hit with nicotine piece, but I was just curious what.
Yeah, nowadays it's not cigarettes, it's vaping.
Yeah.
And so oftentimes vaping is a suspension, correct?
Yeah, but this is just for athletic.
Right, the random drug testing is.
Doesn't have anything to do with academic. Okay. It's only extracurriculars and those we park here that you tested, right?
Correct.
And so could test us that the. Who's game time or?
Yeah, there's a there's a there's a chart and a and a process and and there's ways that students can earn. It's it's like a point system and you get a certain amount of points for whatever violation and students can attend a class or or speak at the council to work some of those points off. And and those classes are directly related to whatever violation. So yes, it can be anywhere from uh one games suspension usually it's a percentage because, you know, with nine football games, there's thirty baseball. So the percentage of the season and they can work off that percentage and it escalates every time they have a violation.
Kind of a little off the topic, how many kids are in detention on a daily basis, like roughly a year? It's interesting to hear that word again. I haven't didn't know that, but it still existed. So.
Yeah, we have, we have various types of detention. We have everything from before school, the lunch detention steps, but with a teacher depth school in our office. So. Hard to really throw a number out of this, you know, handful of students a day.
Okay, cool.
Curiosity, uh, are are there still Saturday morning, early morning detentions?
We we have that as an option. We we didn't use it this year for for whatever reason. We we liked having them in our. Our hands during the day really to to work with them. For the. Yeah. Yeah, it is an option we can always.
Just yours.
Anything else? Okay, um, all in favor of accepting the random drug testing report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries to accept the random drug testing report that's written. Discussion action to approve the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three WI A senior high membership. I'll make the motion to accept it.
Second.
Any discussion around this?
This is the organization that doesn't come fairly without controversy. Have there been any changes or? Discussions surrounding the WI that are hot topics right now?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, I receive both Ryan and I receive reports on like their minutes of. Quarterly meetings. Quite honestly, I don't take the time to read them. That's Ryan's job, so I can't really. Really address that. Adequately or fully. The the latest that I had noted um. Hot topic was some districts changing to eight player football teams. Those want to impact Arrowhead. Also new girls wrestling is now a standalone sport where it had been wrestling. So girls could participate. It typically was boys. Now there's girls wrestling and boys wrestling. Otherwise, I don't have much more to comment. I don't know that there's a lot of change.
We don't have any, we don't have any of the challenges here where somebody identifies a certain way and wants to play on the opposite genders. Team.
To my knowledge, we don't. If we do, it's not an issue because it hasn't come up. You know, my first or second year here. There was some discussion about a student. Was he? A student who identified as a male that played on the male tennis team. Was not a concern. The other direction identifying as female, that might be a bit of a concern. As it stands right now, we, by court cases legally, we wanted to be saying you cannot be on the girls tennis team or the boys test.
Okay, thank you for that discussion on that. Um, all in favor of approving the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three WI A senior high membership report. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Um, lastly, discussion action on the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three six six point zero three zero one student services agreement. Regarding something eight grade Spanish teacher with Northlake. School district. I'll make the motion.
Oh, second.
It's pretty straightforward. Any discussion?
Is this the first time we're doing it or is this?
This is the first time that I'm aware of for Spanish and. Um, we still actually the superintendent at Northlake just put out an email to. Arrowhead in the K eight feeders. Hey, I need a little bit of Spanish. Anyone have? Extra and oftentimes the K eight districts will partner with two part time positions. Usually Arrowhead. Doesn't have extra and we actually have a Spanish teacher who's willing to use his prep period time at the end of the day. To go over to do the seven day grade Spanish. So it's, it's really. It's really nice of that teacher to take the time to do that. It's very helpful to the Northlake students and actually provide a nice transition coming into Arrowhead. And then the agreement that is up for your approval is between Northlake and. Arrowhead in terms of the funding. So they're paying for that portion of that teacher's day. So it doesn't disrupt our class schedule or our students at all.
Laura, I just got a question about the contract in general. This is a pretty large document. Obviously lawyers were involved here. It doesn't, doesn't need to be this in depth to save costs for the school. Like, can this just? Like can, can this just be an email agreement?
No, well, it, no, because it's a sixty-six oh three is what it's called. And so it's an intergovernmental agreement. And that's how school districts do it. And I don't know the legal ramifications behind it. But like, for instance, we did not have an attorney involved with this situation or this case because it's the same contract that we use with Merton for math and with others. It's, it's the standard sixty-six oh three contract between districts. No. No, I'm too cheap.
We'll have, they didn't know that.
Prugal.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor of adoption of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three student services agreement with Spanish teacher with Northlake. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Lastly, discussion, action to accept donations, which I don't believe we have any. Darn it, no. And then would anyone care to offer up any ideas for future agendas?
I just had a question. I know. Next month in August that you have like the fall kickoff where you have like the practice, you know, welcoming new staff, returning staff. Can we get like a date when that is? I know you, when we did it for the farewell for the school year, it's put on our calendars here, so we can.
Yes, we can send out an email just if you want to jot down how, but we will follow up with an email. That welcome back day is August twenty-ninth. And the breakfast starts at seven or seven fifteen in the north campus cafeteria. With the actual program itself, I think we have heard people into the theater at seven forty-five with a eight AM start time. It usually starts with me doing a welcome and then the second thing on the agenda is really the, any board members were able to be there to participate in handing out any Arrowhead awards. So our career achievement award and then our friend of Arrowhead award to a business or community member that's contributed. And the personnel committee already went through those nominations and shows recipients, so that, that happens at that August meeting.
Great.
Thanks, Neil.
Another, I guess, heads up in terms of dates. Our annual meeting, the budget hearing and annual meeting is the third Wednesday in August, which is different for our typical schedule. Very few years do we have a regular board meeting, like this year it would be August tenth. Very infrequently do we have a meeting, a regular meeting, the second Wednesday in August. And then the annual meeting, the third Wednesday in August. More often, we'll hold a very brief six o'clock meeting that night to approve any hires or anything that's very timely. And we'll do that just typically in a classroom or a conference room before going into the theater. So if that's, and Kimmy and I can talk more about that. We did, we touched base a little bit already, but just to kind of keep that in mind for August seventeenth, might be a six o'clock start.
Any other agendas? Okay, then pursuant to state statute nineteen point eight five one C, the board.